Seventeen, twenty twenty-four, meeting of the Southborough Zoning Board of Appeals. You want to go ahead with our first agenda item?
Sure. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough, excuse me, will hold a public hearing located at the McCullough Hearing Room, Townhouse, Seventeen Common Street, Wednesday, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven o'clock P. M. With regard to the petition of Patricia Burns Fiori, located at ten Winter Street, map thirty-eight, lot thirty-two, Southborough, Mass. The petitioner is seeking a special permit and a variance to allow an accessory apartment that exceeds the maximum habitable floor area. The property is located in the residential B district. Relief is requested under section one seventy-four dash nine B.
Yep, all right. Do we have anybody here to present for the applicant? If you could just identify yourself and address.
Sure. Patricia Burns Fiori, ten Winter Street.
Is that, is the mic on? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Patricia Burns Fiori, ten Winter Street.
Okay. Do you have anything that you want to present or anything you'd like to sort of, I mean?
It's in the application. I, I purchased this house with this building. I apologize for my voice. I'm kind of hoarse.
Okay.
Purchased a house with this building behind it twenty years ago. So I don't really know the extent of when that was built. We haven't done building permits and stuff, but I would like to turn it into an apartment. And I think it's a, would be a really good use to have it as a one-bedroom apartment. It wouldn't disrupt the neighborhood at all. It has separate parking, separate driveway, and that.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any question.
So, so before we begin, I'm just going to note, you do have, the packet includes, the Board of Health said it's not a problem, your septic system is fine. We also know that the planning board needs to review.
You already have.
Yeah, and, and, and they voted four to zero with one member being absent to recommend to grant the special permit contingent upon ZB A approval of the variance to exceed the twenty-five percent habitable, habitable floor area threshold. So we understand that's kind of the main issue here. Also understand it's, it's a fairly old house. There's not a lot of square footage. I think we've actually discussed some of these points regarding the twenty-five percent. We understand where it comes from, but.
Absolutely, but the, the building is the building.
Yeah.
It would be prohibitive to make it smaller to meet that twenty-five percent threshold.
Right, right, okay. So what I would like to do then is just ask the, the members here if they have any questions for you, and we'll start at the end with Doug.
No questions. Honestly, I think it's pretty straightforward. Thing is, we talked about before, there definitely is a housing crisis, and I think this is a great opportunity to create an accessory dwelling unit at the property and so, but no specific question. The, the package was clear, and I don't have anything further.
Okay, thank you. Jamie?
Yeah, I'll echo what Doug said. No questions. Thought the packet was great, and I really don't have any issues.
Thank you. Paul?
I agree also with the previous two. I have no questions and like what was stated.
Okay, thanks. Doris?
I have no questions. I really appreciate a complete application, and as David alluded, we're aware of the twenty-five percent rule and how it can impact a small square footage. I think this A D U is a good addition to the town.
Kim, Mike?
Just a question. I saw it as in the application that there won't be a change to the number of bedrooms. Is that correct?
In what, in what way?
With respect to the septic, it's going to stay consistent.
So my original thought was to increase the septic by adding another leach line because the tank was big enough. But I'm too close to the reservoir.
Okay.
So I can't enlarge the septic. So it means that my guest room goes away.
Got it. Okay, I just wanted to check on that. Just, that's all.
Frankly, my guest room is probably smaller than many people's walk-in closets, so it's not going to be terrible.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Yeah, and it's, it was noted that you have a compliant three-bedroom septic system, so who in your main house, the, the, what you're proposing is a single bedroom, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Now, I, I would agree with my, with the fellow board members that it was a very thorough package, explained very well, so that's what leads to not having a lot of questions here.
Thanks, Laura, for her help with that.
No, she's good. But so to be clear, as far as voting, Doug is an alternate for tonight, since we have everybody else here, right? So, okay.
I think, I think it's important just to notice for the record, based on the, the, the size of the home, its location, you know, it, it's going to meet those criteria for, for special permit and the variance.
Yeah, you know, that, 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 that's a, it's a good point. I think we need to make note of that in the findings.
Absolutely.
It is really due to, you know, the nature, the house is older, it's very small. The lot being where it is, next to a bottle of water.
Yep.
Right, impacts what you can do with the septic.
It's not more detrimental.
Right.
You know, it's not, it's not, it is consistent with the, with the neighbors.
Right. And I think, you know, like we like to point out, I think one point we could raise here is there didn't seem to be any abutters here to raise a concern. So it is a neighborhood I, I'm, I'm familiar with. I live fairly close to it, so I can appreciate the fact that an older home, when you have a creative opportunity to do something like this is, is, to me, is, is a good use, so. All right, if there are no more, no questions from the public or another board or board members, then.
Did we receive any notices or mailings on this?
There wasn't any. Okay. The first thing we would have to do is close the public hearing, so.
I'll make a motion to close a public hearing on this matter.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made to close the public meeting with a second. All in favor, respond with, with aye, opposed, nay. Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Williams's aye as well. And again, we, I don't think we really had any, any, any concerns here regarding conditions. We could probably just kind of get right to the heart of the matter to approve the, the special permit.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the petition as drafted.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve petition as drafted with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed, nay. Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Congratulations. It is, is approved. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, and ahead of the, do we make it seven fifteen?
It is seven fifteen, so you can take either the minutes or annual report or anything like that. If there's something there that you want to just knock off the agenda.
Yeah, maybe. I don't know. Did, did anybody have a, did everybody have a chance, I should say, to review the minutes prior, previous meetings? I actually went through them quite a bit. They're really long, as you know, but they looked like they're pretty intact to me. I thought I found something minor. I could not go back and find it, so I don't know. How's everybody else feel about the? There was two sets of minutes, right? Two separate meetings.
Yep. We had December thirteenth, which was the opening hearing of one twenty Turnpike forty-B, and then we had December twentieth, which was the opening of the two fifty Turnpike hearing.
Right. Just as a point of order, I was not part of the December twentieth deliberation.
Okay, okay. So we, we can, we can take them separately then. That way, you know, it doesn't get awkward regarding the vote. Okay, so. Let's. So let's take them one at a time then. So for the December thirteenth hearing, we did have Mike, Doris, Paul, Jamie, and Doug was present as well as an alternate. So that was one twenty Turnpike Road, the comprehensive permit and special permit.
Make a motion to accept the minutes as drafted.
You have a second? Okay, I think Jamie's second. Okay. All right, that's fine.
It's like Jeopardy.
Motion has been made to accept the minutes from December thirteenth as written with a second. All in favor, respond with aye. Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Williams, aye. Okay, that approves those, that set of minutes. And now give me a few minutes to scroll down to the next set.
There was one thing that Doris had called out for the December twentieth minutes. Page four, first paragraph.
So yeah, for this, for this meeting, everyone was here except Mike, so. So Doug was sitting on that one. All right, so page four. What, what did you find?
First paragraph, where it says, she then stated the board granted a special permit in the parking lot extending thirty feet into the residential zone, but that parking lot is not building, et cetera. She had asked me to fact-check that, and the special permit had not been granted for that extension to thirty feet. So if it's all right with the board, you know, I can change it to just Ms. Cahill, ask what the reasoning was behind allowing that.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, that's adequate. I just felt it wasn't correct.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for calling that out.
And it was material.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Did anybody else have any, any issues with the minutes as written? All right. I was generally okay with them, so, well, if we're okay with them, you can take a motion to, to approve them as written.
Motion to approve the December twentieth minutes as written. And rewritten.
Yes.
Second.
Good. We have a motion to approve the minutes as written with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed, nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. So that will approve those minutes. Still.
Not two minutes.
Still not. The, I think the, the the Warren article is probably, I don't know if that's.
That's going to probably extend.
That's probably going to take a while. I think. I don't know if anybody had a chance to review the, the report, that, because that's in the, isn't that?
Yep, the annual report.
Yeah. I had taken a look at it, and I thought it looked like it covered pretty well what we did for two thousand twenty-three. I don't know if anybody had any concerns regarding them or anything they felt needed to be corrected or clarified. Should we, we should probably just take a mo, a vote to approve them as written, right?
Yeah, we want to.
Yeah. All right, if we don't have a, if, if we're okay with that report, then I think we should probably just take a vote to approve the annual report as written, or, or make a motion to do such thing. Guess I'm asking somebody to make a motion.
I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion to approve the annual report for twenty-three, annuals report for twenty-three as written.
I'll second.
Paul's got it.
Nope. Okay, we have a motion to approve the annual, the two thousand twenty-three annual report of the ZB A as written with a second. All in favor, respond with aye, opposed, nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And Williams, aye. Okay, very good. No, it's almost seven fifteen.
Yeah.
Well, we're not, not punctual. Hey. All right, next on the agenda, we have two fifty Turnpike Road. It's a continued hearing, so. We didn't have anything to read then for that, right? Yes, okay. Okay, do we have somebody representing the applicant this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good evening. I'm attorney Brian Charville, general counsel for Ferris Development Group here on behalf of the applicant, along with my associate, George Dunn, also an attorney. And the applicant's principal, Mr. David Ferris, in the audience with us. He's the manager for F D two hundred fifty Turnpike, which is the property. And we're happy to provide updates to the board following the initial hearing just before Christmas.
Yeah, I, I think you have something that's significant regarding the location, locus of the building and the property line, as, as well as what we know is the, the split in the zone, so if you maybe address that to begin with?
Happy to. The board will recall that this special permit application seeks permission in order to build a contractor's yard on this property in what is now a impervious parking lot. We seek two aspects of special permit relief from the board, which is permission to have two principal uses on as well as two principal structures. You'll remember on the lot today is the fifty-five thousand square foot self-storage building. And if approved by this board and also the planning board after a site plan review, then this would allow a contractor's yard of about fifteen thousand square feet. And we had looked at that site layout plan at the hearing just before Christmas. And we're pleased to report that after a meeting with interested abutters that, and then talking with our engineer and Mr. Ferris agreeing to significant expense relating to reconfiguring septic system, which is under that parking lot today, the applicant is able to move the contractor's yard entirely within the industrial zone portion of the lot. So pleased to update with that. And we did file, I think last Thursday, a revised site layout plan that shows the new location of those buildings entirely within the industrial zone.
Okay. Before we hear from any members of the public, do you have something from Melissa Danza from the Conservation Board? Quick note about the plans submitted for the hearing at two fifty Turnpike Road, I assume. Did you receive this, this communication or no?
Do you mind saying what the date was of it?
It is today, January seventeenth, one thirty-five P. M.
I did not see that.
Okay, we can, we can certainly share that with you. But what she notes in here, that one, the change in location of the building requires amended permits in parentheses, order of conditions and stormwater management permit for the construction of the contractor's building. Two, the plan dated one nine twenty twenty-four also has the elimination of two existing catch basin, basins to the rear of the building where the existing pavement is now. The commission explicitly discussed that the applicant cannot disconnect the existing drainage that feeds into the detention basin. This elimination is also a change or the originally approved stormwater management system takes water from the parking lot. The applicant will need to demonstrate to the Conservation Commission, Commission in their amendment request that the changes still comply with the requirements of the commission.
Very good. The board will recall that in November, we had obtained an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, taking this proposed building into account.
Right.
We had thought in consultation with our wetland scientist and our civil engineer that going back to the Conservation Commission would not be required because it was just moving the building on, again, one aspect of imperviousness to another.
Right.
But we're happy to go back to the Conservation Commission to make sure that
Okay.
the agent and the commissioner satisfied.
And they actually, she had a third point here. The removal of pavement and change to lawn also requires to be included in the amendment to the permits. It's just all part of one process, right?
I didn't mention that, but in the revised site layout plan, you may have noted, it does provide for reducing the imperviousness by removing pavement, what would be to the south of the new yard. So we're happy to go to Conservation to make sure they're satisfied.
Okay, I'm just going to give myself a minute to check. There was a few communications here. One from Ms. Luttrell. Do you want to elaborate on that? I think it just might be helpful for everybody in attendance.
Me, the trial planning board chair. My question is that the special permit before you is for two uses and two buildings on, on a lot. But the site plan that was submitted with the application shows changes to the exterior of the self-storage building, which one of the findings of the special permit for that use says no exterior alterations. And the site plan did not show any exterior alterations, and in fact, there was a, there were plantings there. So I'm wondering why that has nothing to do with this, why that is noted on the plans, and I'm hoping that if this is approved, it wouldn't be construed that that would be approved, seeing as there's not an amendment to that special permit before you.
Okay. Do you?
All that last week's site layout plan is intended to show is the building's footprint entirely in the industrial zone and the removal of the pavement to the south.
Okay.
I understand that Chair Luttrell reads these revised, revised plans very, very, very.
She does.
Very.
We appreciate.
Very carefully. And the intent of last week's plan was not to change the self-storage building that has been completed, but not yet open.
So does that mean your, your updated plan will not have the seventy, what, removal of plantings in addition of garage doors?
I'm not sure, but again, that is a matter for the planning board. And as I've said at both instances of this hearing, we will go to the planning board to have the site, to have a new major site plan.
Does that address your concern or not really?
Well, it's curious why that mysteriously is on there. It has nothing to do with this permit. I would feel better if it was removed from there because it has nothing to do with this permit. If they were to do that, they would have to come back first to this board to amend the special permit for the use because the the original special permit, one of the findings is no exterior alterations, and adding garage doors is an exterior alteration.
This board's two thousand twenty-two special permit allowed self-storage to occur in the existing building.
Yep.
And that's what the owner applicant intends to occur in that building as soon as the planning board will allow the building to.
So is, are you, are you just saying that what you submitted is not the final plan or?
It's a final plan in terms of this board's review, which is to approve two uses and two structures.
Okay.
That was the end.
Right.
I mean, it is not an existing conditions plan. It is a site layout plan specifically intended just to show buildings.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you're saying the details are going to come through in the site plan anyway?
Site plan review. Is they always?
Yeah, yeah, okay, fair enough. Any concerns, Mike?
No. I don't.
Yeah. It seems reasonable enough. We know you, you've got to go back through site plan review.
That's just it. It'd be an issue if they didn't have that, and I would make that as a stipulation, but otherwise, I'm not giving it.
I'm actually also interested because we, we did talk a lot about, you know, working with the neighbors and the abutters. I'd actually like to invite Mr. Andre, Mr. St. Andre, sorry. Do you, would you mind just addressing how the that's proceeded with the, the abutters and the, the applicant?
John St. Andre, fourteen Skyler Drive, and I represent a group of abutters and the neighbors that are directly affected by this two fifty Turnpike Road area. Our major concern, of which there are many, but our major concern when we were here last time was that the placement of this contractor's building was going to straddle the industrial zone and the residential zone. And we were concerned that if the permit was allowed and the building was allowed to be placed there, then it would affect restrictions that are in effect that would prevent that from happening. So that was our major problem. We did meet with Mr. Ferris and his attorneys at his office with a few of the abutters. And I wouldn't call it Woodstock, but it was productive. The, Mr. Ferris said he was willing at a, at a great expense to move the building off of the residential zone and put it entirely in the industrial zone. And that, from my point of view, stops the problem, the major problem that we had, because if that didn't take place, then we'd be, we'd be talking about if the permit was granted, having to appeal that and all the legal stuff that goes with it. I don't think we have to do that now. So that's been eliminated a, as far as I'm concerned. There are other issues that the abutters and the neighbors have, but that was the major one, and I think that the applicant has addressed that. And that, that was a very positive thing. We do have abutters and neighbors here today who have other concerns about the contractor's yard building, and I, I, I'm not saying that I am authorized to support the permit or to oppose the permit, but there are concerns that the neighbors and the abutters still have, which perhaps Mr. Ferris or his attorneys can address here tonight and maybe allay some of their concerns. But the major hurdle that I saw appears to be eliminated, and that's a, that's, that's a big thing for us. So there was a good, there was a, I would say that it, it was a very productive cooperative meeting, not Woodstock, but not bad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cultural references noted. Thank you. Sorry, I'm just, we, we did have other inputs. Karina Quinn. I'm trying to summarize it. And using language for off-site drainage and detention. I think that conservation has kind of addressed that, and that would, that would certainly, if we're going to go forward, that would have to be, you know, a condition of it.
And I think those planning comments, which I think came in yesterday, were merely, I think, to remind this board of the plan, of items remaining from the planning board's site plan determination, self-storage building. The drainage easement, for example, has been finalized with town council and recorder.
Okay. Yeah. The existing parking lot area along the southerly edge that existed on the original larger lot prior to the A and R, the Residence A, is an illegal use in the Residence A zone if used as part of the self-storage facility project, but you're like, you were, you're addressing that by moving it forward, right? While I'm doing this, do we have other questions? Jamie, you want to go ahead?
Few questions. When I was looking at the plan, I, I may be misremembering, but I think originally you said that the trucks were going to come around the back and drive in. Is it now that I saw the plan, there's like a walkway and the trucks are going to, there's, I'm assuming there's like a garage door that?
The building's orientation will remain the same in the sense it will run west to east, and the roll-up doors will face to the north. Just by shifting the building to the north, the area for them to turn will be slightly less than it had been before.
But the roll-up door is basically you, on the Route nine side, not the residential side? Okay.
The, the residential side, side will only have a second egress, a, a, a man door, person door, if you.
Okay. I think, Laura, do you mind putting the site plan up? I, I know you guys attested to this, and I believe you, but it looked like it was very close to that residential industrial line, so just confirming that a hundred percent, obviously, surveys will be done and the building will remain.
Yeah, and this board's decision, which we had sent in a draft for the board to consider, could certainly state that.
And I think my only other question for now is that I remember there being some discussion on a fence that had been promised. With this new orientation or movement, what does that mean for the original promise related to the fence?
There will still be a fence certainly between the rear of the building and the southern side of it and the lot line. It'll be a matter for the planning board's major site plan approval about its final location. If it differs at all from where it was shown in their twenty twenty-two site plan. Which was, as we talked about last time, along the zone line.
Certainly the major change here is where this was thirty feet down. Right, right through that line.
The red rectangle was thirty feet further south than it's shown in the first versions.
Right, but the fence goes, will cover basically both buildings, correct? Like, it'll, it'll go through that whole line, not just for that new building's main?
Uh, no, in the, uh, twenty twenty-two site plan decision from the planning board, the fence basically encircles the parking lot. So it goes basically within the wood line that it's shown, the tree line, further north actually. So the southern face of it is along the zone line, right there, but then it stops, um, where the trees be on, right? Stay there and runs north.
I see.
That's how it's supposed to be done.
Alright, I get it.
Twenty twenty-two. It'll be up to this planning board about whether that changes at all to more appropriately encircle the contractor share.
Alright, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Um, Boris, did you have something?
I had a question. Do we have a setback issue even though it's the same owner of the resident? Residential law?
Well, I, uh, that you could, it does seem like a reasonable issue, but I think, I think the setbacks apply to a property line. And this is, this is the zoning line, so I don't, I don't, I don't think that will apply.
Attorney Benan has specifically looked at that. All references to setback are from the lot line, not the zone.
Right.
Okay, got it.
Right, I think we, we did talk about kind of extensively, um, the, sort of the history or the legal history of the divided. And it really, or actually, we talked about the, the exception in the zoning saying, uh, you could allow for the less restrictive use, but like the intent of that was really not what this is, I think we, so we did.
Yes, we've tried to set that off the table.
Yeah.
By moving the building so.
Yeah, okay.
Industrial.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
I, I have some other points, but not only if the public raise them again.
Good.
Okay, second hold.
Doug, did you have anything? Okay. Mike, we, you know.
There's public comment.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm actually, um, like, like, as I mentioned before, I was very interested in what Ms. Mr. St. Andre had to say regarding. Uh, it did seem like there was a, a good faith effort to, to work with the abutters. Um, but this would be a good opportunity for any of the, any of the neighborhood, any of the neighbors, any of the abutters to raise any, any concerns or questions.
So hello, uh, John Palmer, one thirty-one Parkerville Road. So I am a direct abutter, just a couple of doors down from, from the site. And in fact, uh, since the developer has started to clear a bunch of the trees along the property line, um, I'm, I'm actually able to look directly onto the parking lot and I can see what's happening from my bedroom, from my back, um, backyard and so forth. So it's, it's, um, I am truly a, a direct abutter of what they're proposing here. So a couple of things, I'm glad to see that they've moved the building completely onto the industrial zone a lot. So that's, that's, that's good news. But I am still very concerned, um, about what's being proposed. It's very different and larger in scale than what was permitted last year at this time, uh, back in December of twenty-two. Um, it's two uses, two structures. I want to make sure that this second building, you know, follows zoning, uh, first and foremost. And, uh, to the point that was just made, you know, I'm no zoning expert, but I would have thought the setbacks applied to the zoning line, not the, the lot line. The lot line was changed. So, you know, that would imply that, hey, if, if, if you want to get past the setbacks, just change the lot line. Um, so I would think that the zoning and the setbacks would apply to the, uh, zoning line, not the lot line. So that's one concern. And then I just want to make sure that as this goes forward, if it does get approved, um, I want to make sure that, that we have an opportunity to influence and that the, the developer and the town will work with us as direct abutters to address our concerns regarding, uh, the use, regarding the lighting, the noise, hours of operation, all that sort of thing, I would assume. Um, and you, you can help clarify for me, I assume that this would go from, you know, ZBA approval, if you guys do approve it, back to the planning board for, for that major site plan review. Um, and that would be our opportunity to, to further voice our concerns about the, the, the use and the lighting and the buffering and, and all that good stuff. So that's, 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 uh, that's in short, my, my concerns about, uh, what's being proposed.
Is this something that has been discussed already with the, with the abutters? Are the details of, of the, of, of the application?
Not in terms of things that are within the jurisdiction of planning board, not yet.
Okay.
But we, again, had a very good meeting on Friday the fifth.
Yep.
So there's no reason that couldn't continue as we finalize the appropriate drawings that go to the planning board.
Okay, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just concerned, I don't want to, I don't want us to go forward and, and put it all on planning board for site plan review if there's something that, you know, really we should put, because the ZBA has the ability obviously to put conditions in place, says this is what has to happen. And again, I, I mean, I have full faith in the, in the planning board to do the site plan review as they're, as they're supposed to. But I guess I'm just being a little bit concerned, I don't want to leave a gap somehow. So I don't know, am I being a little bit crazy, Mike, or what? No, I was looking at you. You're the lawyer.
I think you're being a little crazy.
Okay.
I think of this twenty-two site plan decision and how thorough the planning board was there about fencing and everything that Mr. Palmer mentioned. Fencing, lighting, hours of operation. The only word he used that is within this, that you guys have to decide hopefully tonight is uses.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I want us to focus on because again, I always like, we have different roles as planning and zoning, and that's site plan review.
Okay.
When I hear those type of, of genuine concerns, I'm not trying to minimize those.
Right.
But I also understand what our role is. And if our planning board wasn't conscientious, that maybe have a different thought of that. But to me, to me, I just want to stick to, for me, I just want to stick to what's in front of us.
Okay.
That's my, that's my perspective.
Do you, do, I, I would like to ask, maybe do you, you agree with all that regarding the site plan review?
Mostly, yes.
Mostly, yeah, I mean, the, the, he is talking about details, right? Correct, um, screening, lighting.
Right.
Um, so it does make sense to me that we need to focus on one thing. And, and it does feel like it's falling more and the, those details of the planning board.
So if the use is approved, and I still have some questions on that, then all of those things, you're correct, fall to the planning board to, for the details on the site.
Okay. Exactly.
But I would caution, although setbacks may be, uh, lot, there is, in landscaping, there's a twenty-foot landscape buffer required between a, um, non-residential and a residential zone line. So that building would not be in compliance with, um, our landscaping bylaw because it's right on the zone line. And I, how tall is the building? Are like backhoes going to fit in there?
Uh.
Cherry pickers?
Do you have a tw- tw- twenty-four foot garage door? I don't remember, no, probably wasn't that tall.
We've submitted elevations to this board.
Yeah, I don't know where we have that. Yeah, if you could. So I'm sorry, what, what, between, we have specific zoning that is when you're between a residential and industrial, there's a landscaping buffer? And how wide is that supposed to be?
Twenty feet, twenty feet unless it's, uh, industrial park, then it's fifty feet.
Alright, and, and is there a specific placement for that landscape buffer that has to?
Along the, along the zone line.
Along it, right. So I guess my question is, does that mean you need the building to go forward even further? Or is it just that needs to be landscaped along that, that border?
So it would need to be, it would need to be landscaped along the industrial side of the border.
Okay.
For a buffer to the residential zone.
Yeah.
Was it, is it twenty-nine?
Yeah, scroll down a little bit.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three nine, I just can't see the better glasses.
That's, that's the, that's the roof though. Well, we're talking about the, the height of the building, but if you scroll.
The height of the bridge line would be not here, but it's.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think the heights. But it, I, I'm curious about the door. Well, it wide, you don't, I don't think there's a dimension on the height of the door.
If the question's being asked, but backdoor is going to put in there, being awkward small back.
It would be, yeah, that's not.
Yeah, you can put a mini Bobcat in there short, but it's not going to be a, a place to park heavy equipment.
Okay, thank you.
If, if I may, uh, just restate then the, the two big concerns I'd have from your perspective, the zoning board's perspective. One would be, um, you know, the, the setbacks, uh, relative to the, you know, zoning line versus the property line. Um, and, and I'm no zoning expert, but, um, I'd, I'd ask the ZBA to weigh in on that. And then secondly, um, you know, the, the, the change in use, this is, this is significant. This is, uh, two buildings, two uses, that's not what was talked about a year ago. So those are the two primary concerns at this point.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to find the, that specific zoning. Did you have, did you want to, yeah, go ahead.
I did. Uh, Janet May, twenty-one Skylar Drive. Um, it is sometimes confusing knowing which issues come before zoning board of appeals versus planning board. But use is directly under your purview for approving this, okay? So I, I don't really know what a contractor yard is supposed to be or is planned to be. But they're saying that this is a hundred percent for storage. Yet they're putting bathrooms in each unit. It's going to be heated. It seems like more is going to occur than just storage. I don't know whether people are going to be working there, uh, running saws. It, I wish that would be clarified.
Okay. What's your response regarding the, the uses?
We're before the bill board on two buildings.
Yep.
And two uses. And contractors yard is a by right use in the industrial zone. Contractors yard is not defined in the self-pro zone by law. I referenced the Marlboro zoning ordinance when we talked last time. But again.
Yeah, I think.
Contractors yard.
Yeah, right, it's just the, the, I think, I think contractors yard building is actually not defined in our zoning code. Contractors yard is certainly. And, I mean, it might be, might serve our, our purposes to, to, to be specific about uses. I mean, I, I would think the intention is more a storage location for equipment, right? This is not a working area. So you wouldn't object to us putting in conditions saying something to that effect.
I'd have to talk to my client about that.
Okay.
That can do.
Alright. Go ahead.
The code section under Highway Business District. It, it lists under special permit, um, the sale or storage of fuel, comma, lumber, comma, building materials and equipment, comma, contractors yard. This is, I mean, it, it's an allowable use if it meets the definition. We got, uh, last meeting, we, um, prior to Christmas, um, holidays, we got very deep in the weeds on the thirty feet, but not just understanding, maybe a step back. They're just going to store various contract equipment? What's the use in practical terms for the neighbors? The use in, in layman's terms?
I said it, I think.
That's okay.
With the Marlboro zoning ordinance, which is storage for contractors and tradesmen of tools, equipment, materials.
Right, in the, in the parking, it's going to be inside the building or they're going to place? I mean, they're, they're in marble, that's a good example. There are yards that have a whole variety of different, pretty heavy equipment in their yards. Are we going to see that in this parking lot?
The intended use again is contractors yard. Uh, the last year's special permit and then the subsequent, uh, planning board's site plan decision allowed open storage in the parking lot. But the intent is for it to be within the building. Mr. Ferris is at the podium, so I'm sure he wants to speak more to the use.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having us and hearing, uh, our application before you tonight. And this is my first chance to speak with you all, and I really appreciate being here. I just start by, uh, introducing myself, I'm David Ferris, lived in the community about fifty years. And, um, uh, stone's throw from this location on Parkerville Road, grew up at seventeen. And part of my paper route was John Henry Knox and Stubtoe Lane and John Matthews. And I used to eat at Andrea Restaurant if I got an A on my report card. The only As I ever got was in gym class, but, so I know that area pretty well. Um, and we bought that original dilapidated building at the suggestion of the, uh, Self-Power Economic Development Committee. Just a little history, if you bear with me for a minute to, um, and, uh, one of the paper route, uh, recipients from it was a guy named Chris Robbins, who's been really spearheading a lot of the development efforts over the last ten years and the tax rates and whatnot. And he suggested we put a storage facility in there and I thought it was a good idea. And we eventually came to terms with the prior owner out in New York that had kind of left it dilapidated for about eight years. It's a functionally obsolete office building with a bridge that'll never lease his offices, a lot of places won't. We inherited the parking lot and our first outreach to the community was really the direct abudded neighbor, which is a young girl who, uh, her uncle went to, I went, I went to school with her, his, his niece, uh, Freiberg, who's on the corner lot and I, and I just met with her, her uncle, uh, about two weeks ago. But in any event, we had made an offer to buy that parcel to make him a lower impacted individual. And we, and he really likes the location and stayed there. The second most directed property is one twenty-five Turnpike. And one of our employees, we bought that and, and again, just because it was directly in the backyard or really affected neighbors, uh, tried, tried to really kind of, for lack of a better term, isolate the parking lot to be a developable site. And we really approached it from the perspective of it has a lot of frontage where we could just carve it off. And by right, we could come in here and put whatever we really want by just moving another lot line between the building and the parking lot. We're trying to do this in a pretty reasonable and responsible way. Um, in seeking relief before this board to put this, what we think is a reasonably sized building. I think on a standalone basis, a much bigger building with a much greater height could go in this location. I don't think it's appropriate given it, it, it literally is on the street I grew up on on the opposite side. And, um, and so we, we did the lot line adjustment originally with the intent that the zone allowed us to go over the industrial into rez and ultimately listening to neighbor feedback. And we've tried to isolate issues around the forty B versus this and try to make some goodwill deposits frankly with the neighbors. Uh, we, we have the philosophy in the company that you don't treat people like ATMs. You make as many goodwill deposits as you can in the community and you hope that when you. You make as many goodwill deposits as you can in the community, and you hope that when you need to make withdrawal, you can. And I think in this case, um, we, we went and we met with Melissa to, to the issue that came up earlier on the fence. We did install most of the fence. The only remaining fence line that remains to be installed is on the rear property line. And listening to her feedback, which conflicts with what planning board laid out, we intended to go before planning and suggest that one fence be used for the safety issue around the retention pond and that line just be carried to give the neighbors their necessary screening, but to meet conservation's request not to have multiple fences on one parcel and restrict animal flow. So that remains to be seen. We respectfully disagree with the planning board chair on a lot of major issues. We sat with this planning board chair at this table a year ago. She was vehemently against two forty B projects. She, in my opinion, in my opinion, has respectfully, my counsel is here. You made your opinion. I'd like to speak openly to the committee, and I really feel strongly that what's happening in town recently with the select board meetings, with this meeting is planning is basically hijacking the respective roles of each of these other committees.
Like to, so I'd like to, I, I don't want to veer off into.
Zoning.
Select board.
Right.
Planning board. Uh, I mean, I think we're, we're, we're trying to be cooperative here. If you have something, you know, specific to this particular application, that's really what we have to be limited to.
Yeah, we were just really looking for two uses on one lot. And we really want to do it by keeping the lots merged because we don't want to deal with multiple septic issues. We're picking up a pretty big expense to move the building forward for the neighbors. And we're trying to accommodate the neighbors' concerns by, by doing that. And that's really what, what it's about.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Go ahead, you have something, Mike?
No, although I'm okay.
Oh, I, Doris, did you have something?
Will we move on to a, a new neighbor's feedback? I do want to make sure we address a twenty foot gap in landscaping. If it indeed is a twenty foot setback to allow for the landscaping.
Yeah.
I mean, how are we gonna, we gotta work around that?
Yep. Dave, if I may.
Oh, okay.
The. If, if there's a, if there's a buffer and a landscaping setback requirement deficiency, I, that's not in front of us right now. So if that's, if, if the plan is going to the planning board and then the planning board has something wrong with the plan that needs to either be denied or look for relief, then, then the plan, you know, then they could be sent back to us for relief. But that's, that's not something that's in front of us to, to decide. So it's, that's not a, that's not a direct the butter's concern at the moment. That was, that's being brought up by the planning board right now. So that's something I, I believe that we shouldn't be vetting.
Maybe I misunderstood, maybe I misunderstood the last, the last. Not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying that the last gentleman, not, not necessarily the planning board. Is saying he has some, he has a concern about the line. That's all.
Uh, yeah, well, it's, um, maybe I misunderstood that. But, um, I, I think that's, uh, I think that's for the, the plan to be approved by the planning board. The applicant's looking for relief.
That's not, yeah, that's not zoning code.
I mean, we could put conditions on the use, but I'm, I don't, you know, I don't think. And one other back point on the question about the contractor bay situation.
Yep.
And what it is and what it isn't. I also don't think that if we sit here and decide, and I've seen this, I've seen this done in other towns and other situations. If we sit here and try to decide what can and can't be done in a contractor bay, we could be here for the next three months and we would still miss most everything that could possibly take place. So that's my, my, my assumption here is if it's being applied for as contractor bays, that, and I guess I'll throw this out to, to the applicant, it would be consistent or similar to what we approved on Marlboro Road.
That's what I was just about.
My, that's my assumption when I saw contractor bay. That's what was, that's, I mean, there was relief needed there. We, we allowed it. So this is a different type of relief altogether, but my understanding it would be the same.
Use.
Use.
Yes.
And, and for what it's worth, I don't, I mean, I, I'm not going to say I go up and down Marlboro Road every day, but I go down it enough where I don't, I don't see what's, I don't see what's going on in that contractor bay development being anything.
I, I drive by it every.
Difficult or, or, or concerning. It seems like it's contractors having a place to have their place. And as far as bathrooms go, if, if there's septic that's there, that's, that's allowing for it, then that's, you know, there's the capacity for it. There's no, you know, that would, you know, I think that would be if, if it's not, I think that would be a board of health issue then, I guess.
Correct, I agree.
But as far as having, um, you know, as far as having facilities, I don't, I don't see that as, I mean, we, we approved a, which I still don't fully understand what it is, but we approved.
The condo.
Talking about the, the car.
Car, the car condo.
The car or port thing and the old, uh, which the applicant just referenced, the old Andrea's restaurant there. I still don't understand, you know, why the need for, for, for facilities and bathrooms. I think those did include showers, and I have no idea why that would be needed.
And a kid.
For a car storage place, but it's raising an eyebrow for a, you know, for a contractor bay.
Yeah.
That's just my, that's my two, my two cents here.
Okay. Uh, Jamie?
I, I do think when we say contractor yard by use, and then we don't have a dish definition of contract yard, I do think we have to put some parameters around there. I, I, I agree, we can't go through every potential scenario that may come up on that land or with that building. But I heard, oh, we approved the contractor bay. And to me, and maybe it's just me, that's different than yard. Yard to me sounds like it extends beyond what's inside the building.
Well, a yard would, a yard would typically be the land where someone's going to be stockpiling mulch and.
Stone.
Having crushed stone and having that's, that's more of a contractor yard.
But that's what they're asking for.
Is that what we're asking for here?
We're asking for contractors yard and a building as part of the yard.
So may I ask the clarifying question? In your application, you've asked for a contractors yard to use inside one new building.
Yes.
So just to be clear, you're asking for the use in the building?
Yes.
And not outside the building?
Yes.
But it is undefined term under our bylaw. So, so we have nothing, I'm just saying this for the board is, I mean, there's, there is a lack of definition of what would be going on in the building. But it is, it does say inside the building. So I think if there's a condition, we'd want to be clear that it's inside the building. That's what they're asking for.
And so would you be, are, are you recommending then that we put a condition that there's, that it's only inside, but not in, in a restriction on what goes on outside?
Well, no, I think the, with that, like, no, I would think the, the, well, I think all that could be outside is parking, like, you know, employee parking or who's there or is, can't be, well, again, I'm just, I'm just reading your guys' application. So that would suggest that there really is not storage of materials outside the building. If I'm reading what you're asking for. But I think it's up to this board to make sure that we're clear if there's a condition.
Right.
I don't think, it's not meant to be unrestricted outside. I'm simply saying their use is being asked for in the building.
I think it's going to be too difficult. I'm, I'm with Paul on this.
I, I think, I think a general condition could be implemented in this that states something simply like you're, that's a good, I think it's a very good point then, that it's, that it's for the, whatever, the, the use and storage of contractor material and equipment inside the building.
Yeah, and I'm just reading, and I'm looking at the applicant, I'm reading their application to us, what they're requesting.
I mean, I'm looking at the, at the site plan, and I'm not seeing how that would lend itself to, uh, you know, to an external, you know, stockpiling of crushed stone and bark mulch and firewood in, in, in the site, you know, or.
Don't disagree, but I think it's still important.
Yeah, though I, 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 no, it's a, it's a, I think it's a very good, you know, that's a good point. I, I don't believe that that's what the applicant is searching for here. So if that's the, if, if something like that needs to be clarified, that, that I think is pretty easily, you know, pretty easily done. But if we're going to start to say, it can be, you know, this type of material inside, you have wood, but not plastic, you know, then I think we're going to start, you know, then we're going to start to get pretty silly. But I mean, if it's, I mean, I'd be comfortable with the, with the, with the condition.
Okay.
That states, you know, for the storage inside the building.
Right.
I have a bit of.
Any objection to that, Mr. Carville?
No.
Doris, sorry.
Well, I, I, I think it's a slippery path. You know, a little bit close to contracting and construction and just envisioning a whole variety of things happening outside the building. I, I just don't know if we can get our arms around it.
It is important to note, sort of as a floor top of this discussion, like Mr. Ferris began to note, that we've explored dividing the lot further by an A and R plan, which can be done. There's sufficient area, setback room to meet the zone. And then a contractors yard, we wouldn't need a special permit for two buildings, and we wouldn't need a special permit for two uses. Right? If it, if one of the uses, like contractors yard, is by right.
Right.
And so we could, um, withdraw this application and just do that, do an A and R plan. But we, we think that this could be a better outcome to do it this way. So that's what we're sticking with. But whether you call it contractors yard by right or warehousing is another use that can be allowed.
Right.
Industrial zone. We could be in the same place. So this is act, this is actually debatably better for the town because it is an opportunity for conditions to be imposed, or at least there to be a description given.
Right.
Where it's talked about.
Okay. Did you hear?
Sorry. Beth Wickoff, three Skylar Drive. Um, I was in attendance at the meeting, um, in December. And then this second building that was not in the original plan, I, Mrs. Cahill was going to use the same phrase. I'm having difficulty wrapping my arms around this because in the December meeting, it was referred to as a shed. And now it's a yard and it's unclear exactly what the purpose is going to be. And I guess, um, not being as intimately involved as some of my neighbors, I've been relying on, on them, and they've done an excellent job, so has attorney, uh, John St. Andre. But I don't understand why we're even entertaining the second building that was not in the original presentation. And, um, Mr. Ferris's attorney in December acknowledged that they didn't, um, begin erection of the fence because they knew they had this in, in the, in the works. So I, I'm as a, as resident and obviously very of Southborough and, and a butter, I'm very concerned about the direction that this is taking.
We still have just one, that one building for the contractors yard, correct? There's not two.
And I highly doubt that I use the word shed.
That, and that was, I would, I would, I don't agree with it. I think that the plan that was submitted that we reviewed in December showed pretty much the exact same size building that they've now.
But it was referred to as a shed. So that's, you know, my, I have, I took, I took notes in that meeting. It was referred to as a shed. Um, and it was referred to as a shed by Mr. Ferris's attorney. And he also, he also acknowledged at that meeting in December that they did not erect the fence and it, because they knew that they were going to propose a second building. So I'm having difficulty understanding how that, as a matter of fact, I think I, I stated that I found it disingenuous, um, at the time. I, I just find it, I'm having trouble grasping why we're even entertaining a second building. And it was referred to as a shed, certainly not a construct, a construction yard. And it certainly wasn't discussed that we'd have gravel piles or mulch piles. And it is unclear what the use is going to be. So it's just my perception, I'm just bringing these issues forward as a concerned citizen and a butter.
No, I, I, I understand, I'm sorry if I'm.
No, please.
I, I think, I think there's, I think there is some misunderstanding here, but the, and, and hopefully I didn't bring up gravel piles and mulch yards. That's not what the intention is. So I think I brought it up to say that's not what they're doing.
Wasn't clear.
Well, the, but that's, that's, that's me talking right now. That's by no means was that, that, is that in the, is that being proposed or in the app, in the application? And I, I don't think, I don't think there's a, there's not a second building being proposed.
Correct.
It's just one building being proposed. And the square footage of it is now the same as it was in December, just moved. So if somehow or another, if, if I, I don't recall shed being used, but I, I mean, I, I'm looking at a building that size and I'm, I'm not thinking shed by any means, so.
Well, that was my impression too in December. But I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and certainly any of my neighbors can correct me and help me understand, that that, this contractors building was not in the original proposal. Just redoing the original dilapidated building as it was referred to. And I agree with that depiction.
So the original proposal for the, for the main building, for the, for the current Beehive building.
Yeah, that was a, that was a separate.
It was that building, and then there's the, the two forty B building. But I never was made aware or I, under the impression that this contractors building was never in the original proposal. And now, if you look at.
What, you say original proposal, could you just clarify what you mean by that?
The proposal from, um, Mr. St. Andre, can you help me out a little bit?
The original.
Right, that. Correct, that was, that was the, that was the, the hearing we had, that was over a year ago. Yeah. Correct, right, right, it wasn't agreed. I don't know that that's necessarily something that.
Well, my last point would be when you look at the rendering.
Yeah.
It, it, it looks like that, though the builder agreed to put it all in the industrial zone, it's right up against the, the line.
Yes, it is.
And so where's the twenty, where's the twenty foot setback that he needs to plant landscaping? How's that going to happen if he's right up against the residential line?
Okay, point taken, thank you.
Thank you.
That's the original.
This is the, this is the original submission, correct?
Well, original from December.
December.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, the first. Okay.
Maybe talking about process for a second would be helpful. This is what the applicant's going to do after this board hopefully issues its decision on the question session. The applicant is going to, at Ms. Danza's suggestion, return to the conservation commission to make sure that they're happy with a revised notice of intent and order of conditions, which I think is going to be further, um, peer review by both the conservation commissions, civil engineer, and the wetland scientists, just looking at it from that commission and the town's perspective. Also, the applicant is going to have clearer drawings done that will meet site plan review by the planning board. And as I know that Chair Luttrell and the town planner block, we will have a pre-application meeting with them. We'll have all the sheets in front of us, and they're going to give us the list. They're going to say, you have a building that is within a twenty foot landscape buffer setback. So revise that. And we'll see their feedback, and we'll have the drawings revised within reason. And then we'll make the actual filing recaping. And then it will go through their entire process, just like the self-storage build.
All right. And with respect to any buffer, what is a, the whole project has been moved back.
Thirty feet.
Correct, thirty feet at a great expense.
And we think we're still right on where we were at the hearing on December twentieth by saying that as the chair referenced earlier tonight, the less intensive use under the self-rezoning by law may extend thirty feet into the more restrictive zone. So we think that what you're looking at here should be approved and is legal under the town zoning by law. That being said, as Mr. Ferris said, the applicant is undertaking the goodwill gesture of at a quarter million dollars of septic rearranging expense, moving the building north entirely within the industrial zone.
Yeah.
Which we thought addressed all the comments that came from, from you, St. Andre, and all of his clients who all spoke, and the board's concerns.
Yep. Yeah, if, if I may, I, I think, I think you, you do have it, uh, correct here. And I think it is our, what we need to focus on, what is the use? I think a lot of the concerns are something that certainly can come up under site plan review. So, uh, I'm generally in agreeing, in agreement with what you're saying. Sorry, you have something?
Yeah, just, uh, two more quick points to, uh, um, the, the point just made. The, the building was moved because I don't think it was going to get past zoning as it was previously proposed. As it was previously proposed. Um, that's, that's why it was moved.
Well, I I would only say that we, we, we discussed in, in detail last meeting that we wanted. The applicants to meet with the butters through Mr. St. Andre. So I, I would, I, I'm taking it as a matter of faith that they did that because. Um, a- as a result of meeting with the, with Mr. St. Andre.
Well, but we, we, we didn't ask him to move the building per se. We, we, we were trying to point out that, hey, it doesn't look like it, it. Would pass zoning as, as previously proposed.
Okay.
And then, and then the second point, just to back up Beth on this. Um, you know, when I got the original notice on this proposal in front of you today, it was a notice that came from Concom. And it, and it specified a second building, a second structure, um, a contractor's yard shed. Just, just as a matter of fact.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
A big shed.
All right, and there's no, is there anybody on, on Zoom?
I just wanna, just because I know there's been a lot of questions. I'm looking at this, this is the current. Plan that was submitted.
Yep.
There is no other structure than what's being listed right there, other than the proposed two forty by sixty. There's no additional shed or structure. That's being proposed, am I?
Correct, right?
I mean, I think we're, we're comparing to the December meeting.
That's it.
Right?
There's, there's no change with respect to, there's no additional building other than right here.
And the pre-existing building self-storage.
Right. And that was a separate here.
That's, that's, nope, that's, I just wanted to be crystal clear. Because there's honestly some genuine confusion.
Yeah, yeah, understood.
There's, there's no shed.
Right, right, there's just, well, that's the contractor's yard is what I think they're referring to as the shed. We have somebody on Zoom who wants to participate, so why don't we go ahead?
Yes, Mark Davis, Thirteen Skylar Drive. Mark Davis, Thirteen Skylar Drive.
Yep, go ahead.
I raised some objections in the last meeting and, and I won't go down the. Thirty-foot push into the residential land, he's, he's corrected that. I still am very, very concerned about a fifty-foot setback. For a commercial building on residential land. This has never been done in this town. And if you approve this plan, which he is claiming as of right, he's not asking for any waivers. Then you are giving every property owner in an industrial zone the ability to push their buildings. Onto lot lines as long as they control the land on the other side of the lot line. This is pushing those buildings back against residential and other zoning areas. In the plan you have up on your screen, look at Andy Lane's old existing three-story building. He's still fifty feet. To the zoning line. Here's the quandary. His building, as he shows it, doesn't meet building codes. He needs an egress door off the back of the building. It needs to be handicapped accessed. That walkway that he's gonna have to build has to be level for handicapped access, the whole length of that building. All of those activities are now on residential land. Commercial walkways, commercial uh driveways. Lighting that he's gonna have to put back there are not permitted uses in residential land. Now, y- you can. Sit and say, well, that's detail we don't usually get into, but look at the quandary that you're putting the planning board in. Suddenly, he's got uses that need to be there by the building codes, but we're not talking about them here. There is a reason fifty-foot setbacks in an industrial zone. Belong on in industrial land. And there are certain uses that we do look for waivers, such as loading docks, such as driveways. Such as doors and and walkways to get within that buffer area. No one's objecting to that. But allowing a building as of right to sit on the zoning line and push all these uses onto residential land. Is not correct. You can go into and you can look at it, one seventy-four dash eight A talks about. Uses within a zone. And the fifty-foot setback isn't a pertinent use to the industrial use. On his theory, somebody could go in on a residential portion. And put their um setback on the industrial portion, if they happen to own both. And what you effectively are allowing to happen. Is more intensive development on the industrial side. And if it works the reverse. More intensive development as of right on the residential side. It's not a permitted use. Secondly, the twenty-foot buffer that the uh, uh, planning board chairman talked about is in the codes. Right on Middle Road, we have a contractor's yard, of all things, being developed. The transfer station is in residential land. There still needs to be a buffer between the industrial and the residential. And that developer, from what I've seen, is, is going to comply, even if the use is. Different with the transfer station. How can you put the planning board in the position? Of now eliminating the ability to put that buffer on the, it, it's supposed to be on the industrial portion. They can't swing it on the residential portion. That's not what's permitted. The third issue I have is this whole idea that, that he's asking for a second use. Of a contractor yard. That's okay, but that's not what we're talking about here. There is no such thing. As a contractor's yard building in our zoning. It is not a permitted use. I suggest he call it a warehouse. That way, we are not in a position that four years from now, he sells it to somebody else. And gee, he has a use of a contractor yard and up pop those mulch piles, up pop everything else. It, it's not a permitted use. Call the building what it should be called, which is a warehouse. Then you're not attributing other uses that down the road, somebody else could construe to mean something entirely different. I have worked for a company with a contractor's yard. I was in charge of it. We don't want those uses here. If you, if it's a warehouse building, that's a totally different ballgame and it's as of right. I don't understand why we're calling this a contractor's yard and walking down that path. So I have three zoning objections. One, the fifty feet needs to be in the industrial zone as every other owner in this town has complied. And somebody correct me if I'm wrong. You're allowing an industrial building to be fifty feet closer to whatever zone it impacts. And it's gonna happen, if, if it's as of right here, it's as of right all over town. Two, you're uh, taking away the power of the planning board on their twenty-foot buffer. Which may not be as important in this particular case. But is important all across town to again, keep industrial uses on industrial sites. And residential uses on residential sites. And then the third issue is just the strange use of a contractor's yard building. That's not what he's asking for. He's asking for a second use. And that use is called a contractor's yard. That's totally different. He can say it won't happen, but it will. There was a contractor's yard building down on, I think it's Corderville Road. And every morning, there were forty cars at least of employees that, that, that came there. Dropped their vehicles off and then all went and, and left the yard with their equipment. What was stored in that yard was all the things you would expect of a landscaping contractor yard. That's what you're giving this owner. He, he can tell you, well, that's not what I intend to do. But no, it, we should call it a warehouse building. It's totally different than what he's doing in the adjoining building. So I hope, I hope I've made my objections clear. These are zoning issues. And y- y- you don't, we, we shouldn't be going down a path. Where we're allowing industrial uses to create closer to residential. There's a reason for those setbacks and we should honor that, that commitment and that's what the zoning says. If you go to the residential side, residential has its own setbacks. But a fifty-foot commercial setback isn't listed in the residential. Therefore, it's not a permitted use there. So we're violating it in both directions. He is not asking for a waiver. He's as of right. And that's not correct.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I see it as being in the industrial zone, clearly move it there. I, I understand it's a budding. Jamie, you had something?
Yeah, I, I completely understand what the caller was saying. I think. The only thing I had issue with is if we approve this as it, or with the, with the setback issue. We approve that everywhere around town from now until forever, and I don't see it that way. Um. I think everyone's gonna have, in a similar situation, is gonna have to come before this board, and there's always distinct cases, right? I do think precedent matters, so I don't disagree with that, but this idea that if we approve it now, well, now it's always gonna be this way is. Just not how I see it. Um, so that's one thing. Um, and then I had two other things. One was going back. Um, I'm sorry, I forget the woman's name, but about the one building versus two building. I think the confusion was that she was saying with the initial request. For the storage unit, it was only one building. I don't think she was saying for this application, we're looking at. That, that it's now two buildings and that was never asked. So I, I think that's one distinction to make. Um, I had one other thought, but now I lost it. Um. I don't know, you'll have to come back to me. Oh, I know what it was, sorry. Um. I agree with this definition of contractor's yard being very confusing and. We're asking for a second use, which is what the special permits ask us to allow. Why isn't it called, and this might be my own, me not knowing the definition, but why are we not just calling it another storage? Building, that's essentially what it is, right? It's storing. It's storing material that contractors are gonna use. Yes, no?
Could be.
I mean, I, I think it's kind of semantics, yeah. You're just, yeah, if you're calling it a contractor's storage units, I guess that might be.
Right.
Same type of.
That's an allowable use, but that's not the application. That's under special permit. Also, a storage and equipment.
Right, but it wouldn't be a second use, right? There's already that use on the lot.
Well, but I, yeah, well, the, the, the first use is, is self-stored, right? This is more, again, contractors.
No, no, no.
I think the statement is.
Storage of material.
Storage of fuel, lumber, building materials and equipment.
I mean, it could be.
But I, I would, I, I think one way to help here would be for us to do what Paul thought we couldn't do. Is try to, try to address that by stating it's intended to be inside the building and not.
I think I can help that with just a, a key word, so I just. Getting a legal definition. Construction yard means the land used for the storage of materials. Incidental to the operation of construction contractors, building contractors establishment. What we don't, I think collectively want is there to be a massive space for materials.
Correct.
So the key word there is incidental, as opposed to. We're gonna be.
Let me, I ask a question for you, maybe, maybe you might know better too. Currently, if, if nothing was. If nothing was built, if nothing was allowed, no really forgiven, there's, there's a yard there. That is zoned industrial, that the owner could be stockpiling crushed stone and mulch and firewood. This afternoon, if he wanted to, by right.
I, I believe that's probably the case, yeah.
Yeah, well, exactly.
So I, I mean.
So, to me, so, and this is the way I think of a lot of these things that have come before us for the town here. To step back further, if, if a use is being asked for. That is gonna cause less impact on traffic and tie up on Route nine and as such, I think that's, that's a plus.
Right.
Um, if a use like this is gonna be internal. I, I, I understand there's gonna be a, you know, a, 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 you know, a. Building that's not too architecturally significant constructed, but if the use is all gonna, you know, the fundamental. Request is for the use to be internal, to me, that creates less of a nuisance to the. Now, I don't, I don't, I don't live in this neighborhood, but that would create less of a, but things have been done in my backyard. Where I'm like, oh, that creates less of a nuisance than could have been something else, so. I, I, I kind of, I mean, I'm very sympathetic to, to what a butters feel and think, but I'm thinking from. Again, from public safety standpoint, from general Southborough traffic issues and then just general. Do I, I mean, do you wanna drive down Route nine and see, uh, you know, do you wanna see a, you know, what someone referenced? Do you wanna see a. You know, a, a big backhoe making a, making a, you know, doing a pile of, uh.
Crushed rock.
You know.
Crushed stone, yeah.
Crushed stone or, you know, piling up salt for.
Right.
Highway maintenance or whatever, like that's, and I believe that's something that could be. Like currently done on the site by right.
Well, currently, the, the property parking lot is in great disrepair. It's breaking up. I'm not an environmentalist, but. That has to be a problem in itself.
Right.
The lighting is falling. You know, it'd be a, the least amount of use.
Okay.
Of the property. I mean, they're just trying to develop the property.
I know, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying as we're, so I, I mean, I, I think I go back to the point that you guys were making that if we have. If it's something that we're considering that it have, that, that does have language that say this is. I don't know how to articulate it, but it does, it does have, it does have, it's, you know, it's, it's as, you know, for internal use storage, not.
Right.
And I think that would, I don't know, I, I just think that would be a.
Yeah.
Or would like primary use.
Property.
Right.
Primary use.
Uh, do you have something different? We, this is, we've been at this for a while now. If you have something different to bring, I, I'm willing to listen to it. If it's to reemphasize a previous point.
Uh, really just two quick things. It's Eric Leeder, Nine Skylar Drive. Um, the point around semantics, I mean, I think semantics are important and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but if there's definitions, then. That, well, just follow the definition, but at the end of the day, we appreciated the developers moving the building. And we're trying to figure out, like, what are you gonna do with it? But if there are defined uses for these things based on the description, then semantics, I would argue, clearly are important. The question I would wanna leave with the board, and maybe it's something that's all up with town council, the zoning thing to me is still confusing because if there are, there is zoning for fifty feet versus not. Why is it, or is it not applicable here? Maybe it's worth getting another opinion on that because there still seems to be some confusion because I'm, I'm confused.
I, yeah, I, I would agree. I don't, because to me, the, the fifty feet, fifty-foot setback clearly goes to a property line. I think it, having a, a zoning line does confuse things a bit. How, like, when it comes to, to use, I, I do think, you know, some of the concerns we could address in, in conditions here. Maybe some of the language you use, when we talk about contractor's yard, just to make it clear, the intent is. For it, for it to be stored, right, storage within the building and not. Building materials stored around the, the yard, right? Okay. Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second it.
Okay, motion. Okay, motion.
It's not related, but somewhat different subject, uh, John St. Andre again. Um, if the, uh, board is considering, uh, granting the permit and placing conditions on the permit, would the board consider a statement in its decision that the restrictions that are in place now are not being affected by the board's decision? And the reason why I say that is because the contractor's building it, the lot that it's on is residential. There are restrictions that are in place uh, for that residential part of the lot, which I don't think are being violated, but I don't want anyone to say ten or fifteen years from now, oh, yeah, those restrictions were were eliminated when this special permit was granted. So if the board could say something that it's not eliminating the restrictions that are currently in place, that would, I think that would make a a big difference to us.
Okay, so the restrictions currently in place on the on the residential lot will not be eliminated or affected?
The residential portion
Residential.
of the lot, right?
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe have the applicant comment on that, too, to make sure it's
The concern with that is, I think it runs afoul of the concern that the board itself raised a few weeks ago, which is blurring different proposals. I think them asking for that is them trying to get ahead of another potentially future proposal, as opposed to this decision, I think, can speak to the matter.
Um, what are the restrictions that would would concern you going forward that are on the residential portion of the lot?
A blanket restriction that this decision doesn't touch those. This this decision does not need to speak to those at all. Nothing that is done here tonight is going to affect those. It's just with respect, I think, belt and suspenders that's being sought by the butters.
Okay, thank you.
From my own knowledge, can we clarify what what residential restrictions are we specifically talking about?
Right, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz I'd be uncomfortable putting in language that says it doesn't affect restrictions if I don't know what restrictions are.
There are, there are at least four restrictions. Like, three of them were, and we described in the special permit that was granted
Oh, excuse me, sir, if he, they're just asking you to go to the microphone there.
Okay.
The restrictions that, uh, that are being talked about here, uh, were contained in the nineteen ninety, uh, special permit that was granted to Leaf Systems when the entire lot, uh, the residential portion of the lot was was intact. The, one of the restrictions was there would be no building on the residential lot. There would be no access to, uh, the residential residential lot from Parkerville Road, and that there would be a a buffer zone. Uh, there was, there you go. See, there it is up on the board now. And my concern is that, uh, the decision today does affect a portion of the residential lot that existed when those restrictions were put in place. So I don't see what the problem would be making a statement that those restrictions are still in effect, or this decision is not intended to uh, affect those decisions or, uh, uh, eliminate them or something so that we know that those restrictions still apply. If they're going to be removed later on, that's another topic, but I don't want this decision to be construed that that somehow these restrictions are removed.
I'm I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but if some, if it's expressed and implied that if it's not requested, that it's not changing anything.
Exactly.
Again, I'm not an attorney. I'll, I'll have attorneys, but
My 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 take on it would be is that you are talking about the residential lot. We're we're ruling on what they're doing in the industrial part of it. So as far as I'm concerned, whatever we do
Doesn't affect
doesn't affect the residential
Yeah.
lot.
But you you actually
And the special, and whatever was was agreed to in the nineteen ninety decision applies just as much
Well, it is
today as
I would be happy, uh, if the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect the board's, uh, understanding and belief that that is the case. Then we'll be able to look back and say, hey, this is what the board was thinking. Those restrictions, uh, are still in effect and and not, and I understand that.
It's it's probably reasonable to, I wanna say, make it a finding. Right? That 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 was what that goes, that was agreed in the nineteen ninety special permit. It's just a finding, right? We we do other things, like we say it's located in this zone, et cetera. Uh, I don't see a problem saying one of the findings is something along those lines.
Mr. Chair.
That would be
Let's talk about that.
And make it clear for us.
I just, okay. Make a motion to po- close the public hearing.
I I will second that motion.
Yeah, okay. Motion to close the public hearing has been made and seconded. Uh, all in favor? Uh, I propose nay. Doug?
Am I sitting on this one? I don't know if I'm sitting on this one.
You you were
Okay, alright.
It's the people who sat last.
I close, yeah.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Okay, that that closes the public, uh, part of the meeting. Um, let's, um, so I think I think where we are, we is we want to figure out how we can, I think, we we know we wanna have a condition on use, which is really what it's about, to really make sure that what we're talking about is a construction yard inside a building, however we can, however we can phrase that. Now, I don't know if we still have concerns regarding the 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 line when it comes to the the zoning. I mean, to me, the the setbacks are are really about property line.
Property.
I don't see them being about a zoning line.
I couldn't agree more.
So I I don't know about, yeah, I feel a little bit less concerned about that. I think some of the issues that were brought up regarding the buffering, um, again, that's that's part to me of a site plan review that can go before the planning board. I don't think it's an undue hardship on the planning board to do that. I think that's part of what they do. They're more constructed to look at things like that. So I don't, I don't know what other concerns we have at the board.
I mean, I I agree with what you just said, yes. Um, I guess we do somehow or another need to get some language constructed and I said I'd on the front to YouTube that, uh, probably more eloquently stated that it's, you know, contractor use inside.
Right.
Um, and I know there's I I don't know if we need to mention it in in any type of decision, but I I think it's, again, it's, I think it's something that is ongoing and pending, but the fence, the lighting, um, no other, you know, egress or access onto Parkerville, uh, which isn't showing it on the site plan anyways.
Um, but but again, Paul, that 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 was part of that nineteen ninety, um, uh, binding, right? The special permit that said no egress onto onto Parkerville.
Right, but I know it's it's, you know, was brought up.
Yeah.
Initially, back in December, it was brought up, it was brought up against
It doesn't hurt.
It's not showing it on the, it's not showing it on the on the site plan, so that's why if it's not being asked for, it's not showing it, then there's, I don't think we need to say it.
Okay.
You know, it's like saying, we know you can't build a, you know, a hundred-foot skyscraper there in the future. Like, it's it's not what they're asking for right now, so.
Okay.
I misunderstood. I I thought you were asking.
I thought you were asking to put it, yeah.
No, 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 no. I I'm saying like, I I I think that those items will be
Okay.
will be, you know, are
Okay.
already in place and will be part of what's going, what is, like, I assume currently in front of or to be in front of the planning board, so.
Right, right, okay.
For the site review and all that stuff.
Now, you weren't on the original one. I don't have, it's not a, I think, I think it just means you probably don't vote on this? Because Doug did sit, you you sat on it originally, correct, Doug? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, not that, I I I think it's okay for him to participate the way he has. He just
Yeah, oh, just don't vote.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, I have, I have I'm gonna comment with the finding, uh, I'm, in general, I'm okay with putting a finding down, uh, about the previous covenant, but the applicant was in total disagreement whether or not that covenant was enforceable. So if we're doing a finding in one regard, um, and I know legal counsel said that the special permit is still enforceable.
Correct.
Uh, the client was very clear, or the applicant was very clear, they were in entire disagreement that this fell under uh, mass general law that this covenant has indeed expired. I I looked, as I dug a little pretty far into that rabbit hole, so I'm okay with a finding in, is it the same both directions? Because the applicant doesn't agree. I wouldn't wanna come off saying I'm agreeing uh, on that, on whether that covenant was enforceable.
I think, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know that we need to, I don't, I don't, I I'm suggesting we just state that was in the nineteen ninety special permit. We don't need to really take a position.
I don't want to have any position.
No, I don't, I don't think we should because you, I think you've stated it pretty clearly.
Right, so that's, I
Our legal counsel said special permit is, always applies, so.
Right, and and I and I think it's, we're, um, we're granting a permit on the, um, industrial side
Right.
of the line, and it's the lot line, which I, you know, on hearing, I'm in agreement with the lot line and are we fifty feet from the lot line? I didn't hear an answer on that, but
I think, I think that's not a problem.
Yeah, I don't, okay, alright, that's what I think, too. But that was it. It was just my comment on the finding, making
Okay. Jamie?
I I honestly don't know if this is necessary, but I'd bring it to the board as I know that one of the butters was concerned about precedent this could set going forward where residential and industrial lines meet. And I don't know if we just wanna state that, um, the applicant worked with the butters to move the building and, you know, there was some hardship for them to do that, to get it within the industrial zone.
Right.
Um, to just kind of assuage maybe any precedent fear that this is, I I don't know if it's necessary. It's just something I was
You know, we we precedent has come up before, and I I I'm a little bit dismissive of it. I know it's an important, uh, uh, legal theory, but when it comes to the board, I mean, you could say that anybody that wants to have more than a three-car garage in town can if can always cite precedent. Hey, if somebody else has it. And I I've sat on boards where we've rejected it. So, um, and when we also had a concern a few years ago about, um, you know, an application on on, uh, Parkerville, and we were worried everybody in town was gonna come to us with a a non-conforming lot, and we were gonna let it go, and that hasn't happened, so I don't wanna be, I I guess dismissive isn't the right word. I'm just not this board has the right to review every single application on its merits. And the applicant has the right to say, well, hey, this is what you did in the past, and it's fair. But as a board, we have a right to decide on every individual application on its own merits, so I'm less concerned. I'll just say that.
Okay.
Doug?
So just point of clarification. So we're voting on to allow a use, right? On or two uses on one lot, right?
That's that's the way it's
Yep, however it's phrased.
Let's let's be careful.
Yeah, yeah, just wanna be, yeah.
Saying here.
Are we approving the location of the building as well specifically?
No.
No, cuz that's, that would be the planning board's role. So I'm just saying for if the applicant is wrong in their interpretation of the setback with the zone line, well, that's up for planning board to decide. I'm just putting it out there, right? I mean, I I think the setback is from the property line, right, but or in fact, a twenty-foot landscape buffer. Those are planning board issues, right? All they're here for us to say they're looking for two buildings or two uses, I guess, or two buildings on one lot. Are we, are we approving anything else besides that specific request?
Um, you know, maybe, Doug, what your point is, is that we're
Yeah.
we're approving second use.
It's
Not that that is purely within the industrial portion of the
Yeah, within the portion of the lot.
That the the
Or was it, that's why I'm just wanna clarify what we're actually gonna be, what's the
It's to allow two buildings and two uses on a single lot.
Yeah, that's, and the location of that building specifically?
No.
No.
I think about
Two buildings, okay.
About that, because that does fall under site point review.
Yeah, I just, just for me.
We don't, we don't wanna put a, we don't wanna put a condition in that decision
A location.
that it needs to be located within the industrial zone or?
I'm okay with that. I was just more just
I think we could, that's, that's probably safe. I would, I would maybe stay away from
Yeah.
setbacks.
Yeah, I don't wanna get involved with setbacks, but, I mean
I'm kind of a slave to the petitioner has put forward a special permit request for two uses and two buildings on one. They have proposed, they've sent us a proposed plan on which we are relying on basing that decision tonight.
No.
To me, if we wanted to add a condition, we would say potentially, uh, you know, make a motion to um, accept the applicant's special permit for two uses and two buildings on one lot, provided that such second use of a contractor's yards is expressly limited to incidental use.
I I I like the way that sounds.
And do you feel like we need to add that located entirely within the industrial zone condition as well?
I don't think it hurts.
Yeah, I don't think
I don't think it hurts.
And I I think that incidental use should include inside
The building.
incidental use.
Thank you.
Yes, perfect.
Yeah.
I would agree with all of those.
Have all the That's great. Alright, let's, let's
I'm good.
Our
Indentical within the building, all, well, yeah.
In the
In the industrial zone.
Agreed, yeah.
That way, there's no spillover.
Mr. Chair?
Hmm, if We 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 can't.
Yeah.
Can't.
It did, we did close the public hearing.
I don't know, do we need to touch upon anything else? Is there any other issues that anyone else sees or wants to address?
I I don't have any, I don't have any, I don't have any concerns. No, I mean, if, if you could re- reset what you said, then, uh,
Can I, can I make sure that I have this? I wanna make sure I have the language right. To allow two uses and two buildings on one lot, provided the second use of the contractor's yard building is expressly limited to interior incidental use within the industrial zone.
I don't fully understand what incidental means, but is that like, is that, I'll defer to you, that's, I'll defer to
When I pull up on HR and
You know, that's, oh, that was from what you pulled?
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, I'm not married to that. Um, I just don't understand, I don't, from a, I don't know what incident.
Lauren, where could you restate the, start from the top. I know that's, it's that, that three words in there.
Right, it's second use.
Okay, so two uses and two buildings on one lot.
Yep.
Provided that the second use of the contractor's yard building is expressly limited to interior incidental use within the industrial zone.
That doesn't make any sense. Okay.
But what, what the the term you you found, though, that was, what, building materials incidental to
The contractor's use.
Again, yeah.
I'm not married to that.
Should we say something about, I don't know if storage is the right word, but
Sure.
Well, we could just drop it.
Limited to interior storage of building materials.
I don't, however you said it first sounded good, but just the in
Internal.
Kinda like from the definition of what it was, like, that that seems adequate.
But I think, yeah, I think the incidental is throwing us off a bit.
Okay, so let's drop the incidental.
So so should it just be more or less what she said, limited to interior storage of building materials?
Typical
And equipment.
Typical contractor
Because I think equipment
Assistant with contractor bay use.
Yeah.
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 How about that? That that sounds very, that sounds very legally official, right?
Expressly limited to interior
Storage of
I don't know if it gets us
Building materials and equipment.
We're saying the same thing.
They 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 might store equipment there, that's what I mean.
I don't mean to be a drag. Could you, could you state that again? Maybe I could
I'm trying to make sure I have it right.
Yeah, yeah.
So, provided the second use of the contractor's yard building is expressly limited to interior storage of building materials and equipment. And that's where I lost it.
Oh.
Related to
Within the buildings, is that what you're saying?
Well, but interior, I think, I think in
You think interior?
Should we, I think we're getting into over, like we talked before, overdefining it. I mean
Yeah. That was my, that was my concern.
The applicant has asked for a contractor's yard. I think what we're saying, it has to be interior
Yep.
Yeah.
to the building, and the building needs to be wholly located in the industrial zone.
Yes, there it is.
And we'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm just gonna let it go.
Okay.
Okay.
Hang on. Okay. So two uses and two buildings on one lot, provided that the second use of the contractor's yard building is interior and wholly in the industrial zone.
Okay.
Yeah. Good.
All right, now let's say that that's Paul's proposal. And who wants to second?
That was my proposal for sure.
Yeah, because he can't vote.
On it, on it. It's ambiguous.
So I'm not seconding my own proposal?
No, we need somebody else to second.
Okay, that's a good idea.
I'm seconding Paul's proposal.
Okay. All right, motion has been made to accept as written with the condition All right. Motion has been made to accept as written with the condition as read back by Redmond. Uh, all in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Aye. Williams, aye. Hey, thank you.
So this morning.
All right.
So I have my, a boys and girls clipboard meeting this evening, but this morning we're trying to build a new teen center. So this morning I met with the town, we were at the town, um, planner, uh, architect.
How can we.
So like, you know, I'm on the building committee because apparently they think I know what I'm doing about building.
I have to.
And so like some of the discussions and legalities are coming up and, and the architect, you know, as far as like when we, we still have to go for.
We're going to do a five minute recess.
Trying to avoid the.
Come back. We only have one more.
Attorney.
Five minute recess.
On board.
Thank you. Approved.
This sounds good.
And.
Yeah, yeah, we are. Well, so, so the only item we have left on the agenda, and I apologize that it's.
Are we back on?
To.
We're back.
Okay. We've gotten to, to where we are. Um, but I, I did take a look and I did steal some of. I don't, do you want to, I don't know if that's something you can.
I can share.
Help to share?
Yeah.
Please. Um, I, I wanted to be clear. I don't know if, I know I, I only sent it today, but I added just the items in. In italics. And. We can look at that first. The other thing I'm, I'm, I'm questioning is whether, if we need to put it in two separate places or putting in one place is sufficient.
That's, I mean, that's entirely up to you guys, right?
So.
So does this, I'm going to highlight.
Yeah. Oh, 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 it doesn't.
Just.
Yeah, yeah. She, she's got it unless otherwise designated.
Oh my.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I'm going to make you all nauseous for a second. Where are we? Oh gosh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There you go.
All right, here we go. So I'm going to highlight what David added.
That's, this is what I, so take a second to digest it. Does, um, does rights?
End of appeal period.
We have that discussion.
Yeah. So the date of grant is the date that it's certified by the town clerk.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. No, I ran that by town council because I wanted to make sure.
And, and from a legal standpoint, exercised would mean started at least?
I think so.
Yeah.
That's.
I think that's.
Doesn't mean you need to be completed, just, just.
Undertaken.
Under, so that's, that's exercised or that's start, okay.
And, and, and that is taken specifically from other language we have, correct? I believe.
Yes. So that, um, is taken directly from the language that we have in the bylaw for variances. Um, in one seventy four, twenty five. It just kind of mirrors that language.
Yeah, there's something, this looks, this looks fine to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, it's fair. It's balanced and.
Does it, and, and I, 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 I think it kind of captures what we talked about because we did say we want to have the ability to grant an extension. But I think Doug, you really talked about for cause, right?
Well, I think you also left it open too. We're in a good way. An extension will be granted for good cause and or the discretion of this, which I think is good because it's. Gives.
You are just idiots.
Yeah. Something could have happened. It's happenstance. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So.
I forgot to do this.
But two years is a very fair timeframe for them to do something. And then if, if something happened, then thirty days before it expires, they just got to be before us.
Right.
Otherwise they got to start the process again. I mean, I think that's fair.
Okay.
And if they don't start something in the one year extension, then they should be coming back and starting over again.
The, I don't know if anybody else had any comments, but the, the only other, I, I was interpreting what you wrote as we wanted to put it in two sections, but I think. Isn't, that would be, I think it only needs to be in one, right? On the, on one seventy four nine, uh, the special.
Yeah.
Cause that's the more, that kind of covers special permit.
Right. So one seventy four nine is special permit requirements in general. So that kind of covers like all special permits, both from us and the planning board. I wasn't sure if you guys also wanted to put it in one seventy four twenty five. Because in one seventy four twenty five, we also have the expiration language for variances.
Oh, do we?
But the variances are specific to ZBA, which is why it's under the ZBA.
Okay.
Section.
Yeah. And that, and, and one seventy four twenty five is, is about ZBA.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah, it seems to me it, it's, I'm going to say, I think it's okay just in the first one.
Than nine.
What do you guys, you guys have any concerns?
I mean, unless town, I mean, I think both for clarity could be helpful.
Yeah.
But because there are, I mean, our, our authority is out of both of those technically, correct? So just for clarity, I just, but, but when I, I don't, beyond town council saying only in one place or two, I just, I don't have a strong feeling, but. It, that way it's just clear. It's in both sections. That's my personal opinion though.
I mean, I think that's the next thing to do is if we're okay with it, I'm going to forward it to town council for their, because I think he needs to review anything that's going.
Yeah. So town council can review it. Um, there also needs to be a public hearing with planning board because it's a change in the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
So that'll happen. Um, we just need to submit the final warrant language to the, to mark purple by January twenty sixth.
Okay.
So this is our last meeting before that.
And, and I would just say more clarity too, because I think the reason, reason why we're doing this is that if we do not state it. Then it defaults to a three years term. That's my understanding.
So as it stands right now.
What's the question?
Of is there's, um, language that I put in the decision. Regardless of whether it's special permit or variant that states the process for appeals and then also states the expiration date. So when we first talked about this, I had asked town council if it was okay if we put language in there that said the special permit will lapse after two years, even if it's not. Strictly within the bylaw and he was fine with that.
Okay.
So that language is in the decisions right now. Um, so.
Okay.
Kind of like to fill the gap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I think the language is good as you, David, you've written it and I'm good with it being in both places unless, and let town council opine from there.
Okay. All right.
Unless you might say the jokes sense to me, but.
Any other opinions on that?
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great.
Well, not, uh, not germane to, to this topic, but when you're writing all those things, the little legal, the little subchapter, those squiggles, how do you make that?
How do you do that?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Is there like. It's in a, it's in a special symbols thing?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You don't like to put top of the keyboard that's like F one, F two, F nine. Sign is simple. So you.
Ah, so you don't have to go to.
Yeah.
Not that I'm going to be writing any, I was just kind of wondering like, where are the keyboards at?
So I wish I had known that about twenty five years ago.
Oh my God.
Yeah.
It's what else is, I've always wondered like, like, you know.
And that, that was the.
There are all sorts of semantics.
You want me to go over that? And then March, you want, there was something.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So, so just, uh, some administrative stuff. What, next meeting is what?
So next meeting is February sixth. It's one twenty turnpike forty B. We had wanted to have it here, but that is the same night as the select board meeting. So it will be at the public safety building instead.
And you know where.
I like that. Yeah, that's a nice. Feel comfortable there.
Okay.
Yeah, no, because I leave the seventh, so.
Perfect timing.
Do they paint the walls in here in color?
Probably did it.
Has it always been this color?
Oh, probably.
And so that's seven or seven thirty.
Seven o'clock.
Do you feel like it's harder to hear?
You were like.
Yes.
Up here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's some strange acoustics going on in there.
It was harder for me to hear. I was fine hearing the audience.
Yeah.
Like Doug, I could hear, but the board.
Oh, that's weird.
I also have hearing issues, but not typically.
Yeah. So that's just the forty B.
Only.
Only.
And which.
Where is it?
Public safety.
And which, which one is this? The, the one I am sitting on, the one I'm not?
Yes, the one you are sitting.
The one I am sitting.
Park Central got, um. Stayed.
Why aren't you on Park Central?
He refused himself. He was against that law.
I refuse my, you refuse. You're not on Park Central, right?
I'm not on.
There may be some updates, so.
Should we close this meeting? We need to close the meeting? Or did we do that?
Oh, not yet. Um, really quick. February twenty eighth is our regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah.
We have no applications.
Hmm.
Hooray. Up to you. If you guys want to keep it, we do need to approve Park Central minutes at some point because we'll be past the forty five days. To approve those, um, by the time the next meeting is for that. And then.
The sixth.
We can do it the sixth.
Yeah, it's the sixth.
You're okay with that?
That's for our next meeting.
That's the other forty.
Just to approve minutes.
Okay.
And then we have one twenty turnpike later in the month.
I think you guys.
No, one twenty is on the sixth.
And the later one.
I just know it doesn't interrupt Lauren.
I think you guys should still meet that day, but I won't be there because I'm, I wasn't needing to approve those minutes since I didn't sit on it.
I also won't be there.
That's very generous of you, Paul. Um.
Then we have the twenty eighth.
All right, Paul, the sixth is okay then.
So we have the twenty eighth. There's no application. So if you want, we can do the, the, um, the minutes on the sixth. I'm not sure if anything's going to come up with the warrant article in the meantime. So I don't know if you want to keep that. Date reserved.
Which one? The, the twenty eighth?
The twenty eighth for the warrant article. Although. I believe the warrant closes February sixth. So there's that. But the, I'll be in touch about public hearings with the planning board and stuff like that.
Okay.
So we're meeting on the sixth and it's going to be at the public safety.
Yes.
Yep.
Do you want to keep the twenty eighth as like a TBD?
Do we wait till the sixth to see if there's anything comes up? And if nothing on the sixth, we can cancel it?
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm around.
I'm around.
I'm not going anywhere.
Okay. I, I mean.
Be celebrating the leap year the next, that's about it.
And what?
We can do it via Zoom too. So it's much easier.
Try to like warm up like a little.
We should do on the twenty ninth because we don't normally have a twenty ninth.
Oh, do we have a twenty ninth?
Um, yeah. That's what I'm saying. It'd be celebrating.
And then, uh, the other one.
March, right?
Yeah, the other, the other one, um. Is we're, we're, um, we're scheduled to have a hearing on March twentieth and I'm not going to be available that day. So. I don't know if we can move that out to the twenty seventh of March.
No objection from me. But then we have one on the, the third, right?
We have a check in on April third. Yeah.
March twenty seventh is finally.
Yeah, same here. I'm fine on the twenty seventh. I'm fine to move it.
The best of my knowledge, it sounds like it's another Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just a regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, I just have to.
Okay.
When did February sixth come up?
That was, this is for the forty B and we heard it in December, but then pushed it to February sixth in hopes of getting clear of you.
Oh my God. Problem.
Uh, but I'll be back and then I don't go out and catch it until after home city.
All right.
Okay.
Paul?
Well.
Is it go time?
It's go time.
Uh, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All right. Meeting to adjourn has been made and seconded. All in favor, respond with aye. Oppose, nay. Doug?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Doris?
Aye.
Mike? Williams, aye. That closes the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.